Good morning. Welcome to the Delaware County Council meeting, March 18th, 2021, at 9:08, I think, AM. We're running a little bit late due to technical difficulties. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. And Ron, would you like to start us in the pledge of allegiance? Everybody please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Steve, could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Chambers.
Present.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Okay. Once again, any public comments can be directed to county council, dist@co.dellaware.in.us at any time. Denise, was the agenda posted and advertised?
Yes.
Thank you. And I need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Steve?
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. We've got a presentation from Sheriff Tony Skinner on the drop program. Go ahead, Tony. Whenever you're ready.
All right. Thank you. Good morning. Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. So three years ago, almost three years ago, the county council approved the sheriff's office entering into deferred retirement option plan, better known as drop. Part of going into that agreement three years ago was that that would have a sunset clause on it. And I'm here today to ask you to remove the sunset clause. The way it's set up now, the drop program will expire on July 1st. I'm just asking you to remove the sunset clause and make the drop program permanent for our department. I've emailed everybody a couple of weeks ago. Some of the highlights of drop are it's good for our deputies because when they retire, they'll have a lump sum of money, up to three years' worth of pension payments in a lump sum. I believe it's good for the county because when somebody chooses to enter drop, the retirement freezes at that date, but they keep on working so we can get up to three years of extra work out of a person. The example that I used was that once somebody hits retirement age of 20 years of service, they can enter the drop program and continue to work for three more years. So, once they're finally done and they leave the department, their retirement is based on 20 years of service, but we actually got 23 years of service from them. Drops are never written or intended to cost the government entity's money. They're always cost neutral. So with that said, I'd be more than happy to entertain questions from you.
You had mentioned a little bit about how many deputies had participated. Could you share that?
Sure. So in the past nearly three years, we've had four deputies that have signed up for drop. One of them, at the time that he signed up, he was, he had 31 years of service. So he signed up for a one-year drop. So after that one year, you can't go past the maximum. So the maximum on his pension plan was 32 years. That's where he maxed out. So the drop doesn't allow you to go past the max-out point. So he was on it for one year. We had two other guys that signed up for a three-year drop. Both of them stayed on for just a few months because they both got job offers outside of being a merit deputy. So they were only on it for a few months. The fourth one, he's been on it now for a little over two years, and he's set to retire next February. So he'll be our first guy that does a full three-year drop. With the drop, you can always leave early. So if you sign up for a three-year drop, you can always retire early, but you can never go past that three-year mark. It's set in stone. It's mandatory that you leave.
Why did that one person stay on for one year and then be allowed to extend his retirement date?
He wasn't allowed to. He had to leave. He left. He retired.
Okay.
He's gone.
I see. Understood.
Yeah.
So to understand correctly, because he had much longer years of service, his was only for one year?
Right. So he signed up for the drop at the 31-year mark of his career, and you can't go past 32. So he was forced out. He had a small window that he could apply for drop.
The, when we initiated the drop program, there were either one or two deputies ready to go on there right away?
Well, he would have been one of them.
He would have been one.
Yeah.
Was there another one, or was it, or did?
Well, there were several people that are eligible. Anytime you hit 20 years, you're eligible.
Right.
But I wasn't part of the presentation three years ago, so I don't know who the other one would have been.
I can't remember, but at least, at least one of those, one of those four was already ready to go on the drop. Do you know, I mean, are there, is there interest from anybody in particular? I don't name names or anything, but is there interest in the drop program?
I don't, I don't know that we have anybody lined up in the chute right now that's...
That's kind of what I mean, if you know of anybody.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think there is, because if there is, they would have already signed up.
Yeah.
They would have tried to beat this July 1st deadline. I know there, there's still interest in our department with like our 10, 15-year guys, because we had a department meeting about three weeks ago, and somebody actually asked about it. So I know there's still interest, but there's just nobody, you know, in the starting gate right now, which is okay.
Yeah.
You know, it's because it's just an option.
I just didn't know if you had some, some interest in it because it's getting ready to, to expire or not there, so.
If so, I haven't heard of anybody.
The other thing is, when this was explained to us back prior to three years ago, when we were talking about it, I think there were several different times we'd talk about it. But we, because of the qualifications and the way that things would go with this, at some point in time, the, the drop program becomes obsolete. I don't know that we're, I don't know whether we're there yet. I mean, this was only a three-year stretch to test it out. But, I mean, I'm not, personally, I don't know that I'm ready to do, you know, put it in indefinitely because I just haven't seen a lot of use out of it, I guess. And we, we, I think we still have some questions, I guess, as, as to whether this is really cost neutral or not, that I don't know if we ever got, got fully answered back then, but.
Well, what, like, what are those questions?
Well, whether it's really, whether it's really cost neutral or not, I mean, I think now we've got some people that are in there, so if we could maybe do some analysis. I don't think we need to approve this today, anyway. We've got until our May meeting to beat the deadline.
Right.
As far as the deadline goes. So if we can maybe have some time, I think it's also, I talked to you about it being listed in the, in the union contract, and I know the commissioners have, give notice at this point on that. So, I don't know. Bill, do you, have you been able to take a look at the amendment, the third amendment?
I just saw it this morning.
Okay.
And I was going back through my file, and I, you know, this is a, is a statutory process, and I haven't, I have the statute from three years ago. I haven't checked to see if there are any updates to that either. So I, I would appreciate a month to look at it.
But, I mean, obviously, if you're bringing it to us, you feel like this is something that, that you would want and you feel like is, is necessary, and...
So in my, in my research of the drop program, I couldn't find anything listing pros or cons. So I couldn't find any cons for the government entity. The only cons that I found were for the deputies, or the police officers, or the firefighters, or whoever. And, and they know that when they sign up. So the, the cons are, one of them is, you know that you're going to work for 23 years in the example that I gave you, but your, your retirement is based at 20. You know that in that three-year, or some departments have four or even five years, the state police has a five-year drop program. So in that drop program time period, if your agency receives raises, you get the raise, but your raise isn't affected in, in your drop, in your retirement, because it's already set. So, you know, if our deputies get a raise this year, or next year, or, or anytime that somebody's in the drop program, they get paid that raise like every other deputy, but their, but their retirement isn't affected by that raise. So that's a con to the deputies, but they know that going into it.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't found any, any reason why a government entity wouldn't sign in and make this, you know, a permanent option for, for their officers.
You had a, kind of asked what I was going to ask. What are the cons for the government?
I haven't found any.
The other couple of things I wanted to ask is, do you think this three-year sunset clause has prohibited participation, people understanding that it's, it's about to go away, and maybe that would keep others from signing up?
I don't think so, because if they sign up for it now, they're entitled to it. Even when this, if this goes away, they're still locked into that. So I don't think so.
The other thing I wanted to ask is, you were asking for an indefinite, and we're using, Alexander was asking for a little bit more time. If, if the indefinite wasn't on the table, would a renewal be on the table for another three years?
That's your call. I, I mean, yeah, I don't want this program to go away. I think it's a good option for our deputies, and I don't, I don't want it to go away. So if you go three-year, 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 it's just something that the sheriff is going to have to come up here and, and regurgitate to you every three years why this is a good option. If for...
Well, I was one that was a little skeptical about the program, and still not convinced on the numerical part of it. But I do know it's, it's good for the deputies. The reason at the time we, we put the sunset in there was partially to see how it was working, and it hasn't really given us enough evidence that it's working. But it wasn't, wasn't the intent to totally deny it. That's why I concluded that I would vote for it. But down the road, people change in these chairs. And I'm kind of one of these guys that believes the word transparent is transparent. And by allowing this to come forward before the council every so often, it lets the public see how it's working. Otherwise, it's going to be pigeonholed back here, and nobody will ever see it again if we just, if there's no, no review of it. So that's my thoughts.
Okay. So, so I would encourage, you're the second person that said we haven't seen any evidence that it's either working or it's not working. So I would encourage you to, to do your research. We will provide you with whatever information that it is that you want to help you make that determination, you know.
It's pretty hard to do it when you don't have a whole lot of examples, so you can put some numbers.
Well, there's, there's, there's hundreds and hundreds of examples from other, from other police departments and fire departments around the nation. So, I mean, you know, those are your test tubes.
Well, and I guess where I would want to know, I mean, since we've got some, some people that are on the, the drop program, has anybody gone on the, the drop program and is pulling from the pension at this time?
You can't do that, no. You're, you're...
I mean, has anybody gone on and off of the program that they would be?
Oh, yeah, one. Well, yeah, three of them. So the, the first example, the first example of the guy that could only stay for one year. So he retired. He's done. He's off our department. So he got his small lump sum, and now he's drawing from the pension like any other retiree. The other two guys that signed up that left a few months later, they're both gone, and they're both now drawing a normal retirement also. So, yeah, we have three. Okay. Well, I think we can work with those and, and try and get some idea of how it's affecting the pension. I think that's the, was always the concern from, from council is, is whether it's costing the pension more or costing less. And if we were going to, if people, if a lot of people took the drop program, I remember the discussion on this, were we going to need to put more money into the, to the pension to be able to continue to fund it, I guess was a concern back then. So let us, if you don't, if you don't mind...
Can I say one more thing?
Yep.
This, this COVID thing has brought out some evidence in those other states and counties and cities that you're referring to, in a very negative point of view. Their pension plans are hurting bad. And that's on the news. That's not something I invented. That's one of the places where these states are in trouble with their pension plans. And needless to say, it's obvious that, that our pension plan is, for your department, is costing a lot more than it was when I came on board here about 20 years ago. And actually, I was on board in 1981 as a commissioner, and it wasn't even an issue then, as far as the police pension. Now it's a financial issue. So with that in mind, Tony, and it's not personal, it's just that I think we, at least, if, and I'm ready to approve it for another three years or so, I don't have a problem with that. But I really think that it needs to come before this board and evaluate it. So, and that's the only problem I have with it.
Sheriff, let me...
Can I chime in real quick? Mr. Hughes, Sheriff, let me ask you this. From what I heard, Mr. Webb, and you guys talk about, even if another sunset clause was implemented, that's not unsatisfactory to you? And is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
You had mentioned, I wasn't here when this was approved before. You mentioned there, at the beginning, there's that small lump sum. Where does that come from? Does that come out of the pension?
So, so what happens with the drop is, if, if I've got, if I've got 20 years or more of service, and, and I'm eligible to retire based on the, the program. So you have to have 20 years. So if I say, I want to retire today, then, but I say, nah, you know what? I want to sign up for the drop. So I sign up for the drop today. Well, my pension, the, the drop, what it does is, is on paper, I've retired today. So the money comes from the pension plan, just like I've left, just like I moved to Florida. I'm down there with Jane, or wherever she's at.
[laughter]
So, so that, that money that I would have been drawing in pension goes into an escrow account. So it's coming out of the pension plan every month, just like you're drawing a pension. And at three years, I've been working here for three years, at that point, I have to leave. So then all that money in that escrow, then I get it once. It's a lump sum. Another, another con of the, the drop program is that when the deputy receives all that money at once, it's taxable income. So they know that going in. So they have to be able to roll that money into a 457 or somewhere, otherwise they're going to get taxed on it. And it's going to be a big hit to them. So there, again, it's not a burden to the county, but it's, it could possibly be a burden to the deputy. But that's, that's how the lump sum comes in, because it is an actual retirement money that's been coming out of the pension, but it's been going into an escrow. I don't receive it until I'm all the way done and I've left.
It'd be coming out just like if they retired and walked away.
That's exactly right. But instead of them walking away, we keep them for up to three years of work. That's why I said, you're, you're getting paid a pension at 20 years, but we got 23 years of work out of you.
But if they're a captain at a captain's rate, and they don't retire, they stay on for three more years, they're making a higher rate than if they had retired and a patrolman came in to replace them. So there is a difference in the dollars right there.
But, but if they're a captain, they're already going to be drawing captain pension. And plus, another thing is that when you retire at 20 years as a captain, you don't build on that extra 2% every two years. So instead of, after, when I'm finally done, I'm drawing 20, I'm drawing 50% instead of 56% for the rest of my life.
So what you're saying is, is when that, that dropped, that signature line on the drop sheet is signed, there's no more money that can necessarily be attained or added to that salary, correct?
That number won't go up.
It's fixed.
That's the, that number is fixed.
That's the question I want to know.
Yes.
Salary will go up while they're still working.
Right. The salary will.
So the trade-off is you got an experienced deputy for three years versus bringing in a rookie patrolman?
Exactly. It delays us having to hire and us having to train. We retain more experienced deputies for a longer period.
Thank you.
Based, based on what I'm, go ahead, Bill.
Are you still working with Stan Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
He and I corresponded three years ago, and I might have a question or two for him.
He's the contact.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I guess what I'm hearing from council is, is there seems to be a consensus maybe to look at the drop program with, with a sunset again? Is that?
Yes.
Accurate?
Open to that.
Okay.
I'd like to talk, I mean, at least talk more about it, too. You know, I think Mr. Hughes talked about having another month to kind of look at it. But, you know, Sheriff, I don't think there's any reason for us to not sit down and have more correspondence on this.
Sure.
You know, like I said, I'm not necessarily against it at all. I'm, I'm a fan of the sunset where we can revisit it. And if that's satisfactory, too, you know, I'm, I'm in that boat right now. So I'd like to talk more about it.
Sure.
Well, I'd like to have Bill also talk with the county attorney and the, and the commissioners, make sure there's no issues regarding the union contract and, and that stuff as well. And we've got time to do that, so.
So you just want to table it, old business, or?
Well, we don't have anything, it's not on the table, and we don't have a ordinance ready to, or a, we don't have anything ready to pass that Bill has drawn up yet. So, so real, I mean, really, ideally, if we would put this on May's agenda, then we're going to have most of the answers we need, unless I find out from the commissioners or county attorney that we're okay to go for next month. So one, one way or the other.
Yeah. I, I would prefer to put it on April's agenda, so in case there are more questions, you're not running into that deadline.
Yeah.
Well, no, you, May, you've still got June, so that's fine.
Yeah, we, well, not only that, I mean, we, we'll have all our questions answered before we get to the next meeting.
Okay.
Whether that be April or May.
Either way, I'm, I'm available.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
[inaudible]
Yeah. What was the date on those, Denise? The minutes from last month?
February 23rd.
Okay. I need a, a motion to approve the February 23rd minutes.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion on that? Changes, corrections? Okay, roll call, please. Steve?
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
I forgot, but there was one change on that that I called Denise about. The copy I have doesn't have the change. I don't know whether everybody else has it or not. But on page five, Quakenbush is concerned that this is done right. Full-time positions within Delaware County have not had a raise in over some time. I've said part-time.
Yeah, I changed it on my copy, Ron.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So it's accurate.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the copy we're approving?
Yes.
Yours?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
I just didn't send it back out because it was just that one word.
We okay there, Bill?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We're ready for the transfer agenda.
Okay. Circuit Court, 362, maintenance contracts minus 6,600, 441 computer scanner equipment, plus 6,600. B-136, Assistant Court Reporter, minus $23,235. C-136, Assistant Court Reporter, plus $23,235. Total request zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard.
Yes.
Emily?
Good morning.
Morning.
Electricity run out there?
The what?
Did your electricity run out on your?
No, I just changed back. I changed back and forth.
Go ahead.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So the first request for the $6,600. When we installed the new equipment at the jail, 4D needed an upgrade when they came in and was looking through everything. For them to do video court, like the other courts, which Tim Hollums, our Master Commissioner, does all the preinitial hearings, and that's all done through video through the jail, they needed to upgrade that. So instead of going back to the commissioners, I had, I knew in my budget for the BIS contract would not be as much as last year. So I went ahead and asked Danae in 4D to cover half, and I would cover half, because half of it is full, half of it is for 4D through the week, and half is court, regular court. And so she covered half out of 40 incentive. We got that approved with prosecutor and clerk. And then this is the other half that I needed to cover. But I need it to go back into my account, because this is the account I use for all of my computer and scanner equipment that I do every year. So I'm taking it out of the 300 series that I had left over from my contract and putting it into the 400 series. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
The other...
I'll be here when you cut that out.
Oh. You're going to replace all my computers?
Oh.
Okay. The other thing is, I have held off replacing our Circuit Five employee. We had lost an employee right when pandemic hit last year, and we kept holding off because we didn't feel like it was appropriate to replace them since we were working remotely. What, to train them and just to bring them in just didn't seem appropriate. We are getting ready to go back into in-person hearings starting in April. Jury trials are starting back up. We have two scheduled March 29th, two more scheduled the week after. We've got eviction hearings starting back up, and so we really need this person back. So we're asking to refill that position. We've held off for over a year to help with the budget, and we've never used the money in that pay line. So if we could get that person replaced, we'd really appreciate it.
And that's your B to C transfer here?
Yeah, the B to C.
Yep.
Court reporter.
Yeah.
Let's see, we've got a motion. Any, any questions from council? Roll call, please. Steve?
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Emergency Management, A-104, minus $34,633.47. B-104, plus $34,633.47. Total request zero.
Moved to approve.
Second. We're on.
Motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Go ahead.
Morning, counsel. John Coutino, Emergency Management. This is just moving my previous secretary's spot into the new secretary's spot. We hired, so we just got to move her lineup to another new lineup.
Any questions from council? Roll call, please. Steve?
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Communication Center, G-121, minus $32,369.98. H-121, plus $32,369.98. D-123, minus $29,174.46. E, one, oh, E-123, plus $29,174.46. Total request zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Go ahead.
Paul Singleton, 911 Director. This is to replace two employees that have left. And these two are prepared to start the 25th with our next pay period.
Are these people that were already working part-time?
No.
Or off the street and get trained?
These are, these are new, new people off, off the street. Currently, I only have one part-timer that's working. And he's going, that, my current part-timer's going to be leaving soon to go to the Muncie Fire Department.
So, so these employees will be on the council when?
Um, probably three to four months after they start.
And with these two new employees, you still understaffed?
With these two employees starting, I have two more that I'll bring back to the council next month. And then I've got one that's retiring in April. And then I have one that's given a notice. He's got 50-some working days, so I think he's out early in June. So by June, I'll have four full-time openings.
Paul, I know we've talked about this in 911 Communications, but we're developing a list, I mean, with the people that are leaving, I assume, to backfill those positions as quickly as possible.
We're trying, but as, as quick as we get people interviewed, they're going, going into spots. So, no, I don't have a list established because I don't have that many people that we have interviewed.
But we're, we're working towards, towards that.
Eventually, yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes. I would, I would like to have a list where I have two or three people that are ready to go. to go. And I hope that people are interested in that, getting on a list. They're either going to wait on us or they're going to take jobs elsewhere.
Gotcha. To change the name of your, your operation, the Communications and Training Center.
I will say, I've seen a lot of, a big push now on social media to try to entice folks to come apply for jobs in your office. I know Kyle's been working on that, so that's been good because I've, I've seen it, so.
Right, right. Kyle Johnson.
If you see it, share it. Don't hesitate to share that stuff.
Put together a recruitment video for us, and we have, we're advertising on social media that video is out there. We've been in contact with WLBC, you know, they would like to do something for us, but that's money I currently don't have in my budget for advertising.
Now, there's a rule in communications that they can give you time for public interest if they want to.
Right.
Might twist their arm a little bit.
Yeah, they've been very.
They're compelled to put so much time for that.
Right, they've been very good to us anyway. Anytime we have an announcement or something we need to get out, you know, they're right, right there for us in the community, getting that information out, so.
Thanks, Paul. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Okay, the jail, I have corrections. So, the very first one, 104 should really say minus $36,808.62. Then, A-104 would be plus $36,808.62. The next one, C-152 Corporal, that's correct, minus $26,699.84. D-152, plus $26,699.84. The next one, I have a correction. B-118 should read minus $25,763.10. So, that would be plus C-118, $25,763.10. The next one's correct, B-102, minus $26,584.75. To C-102, plus $26,584.75. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Any discussion on that? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Stay right where you're at.
Sheriff, 145, Door Bailiff, minus $29,687.72. B-145, plus $29,687.72. B-109, minus $38,560.64. C-109, plus $38,560.64. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Questions from counsel?
Is that the second one? Is that just, did somebody leave?
Yes, we had a lieutenant retire.
Any more questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Did she just stay and I do her next one?
Um, yeah.
Okay. Loit, 113, I have a correction. That should now read minus $25,944.38.
944.38, okay.
So, A-113 would now read plus $25,944.38.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper.
Web.
Second from Webb. Any discussion from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Please name some germs.
Clerk perpetuation, 441, file storage hardware, minus $10,004. 443 office furniture, plus $10,000. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Jane, got it.
Motion from Piper, second from Lassiter. Any questions from counsel? On this, Rick, you want to explain?
Yeah, just another part of the moving pains, moving into the new building. When we got out there, some of our furniture wouldn't fit, specifically my chief deputy's office furniture, so we had to replace some of that. We've had some chairs we've had to replace. So, basically, I'm just taking this money and renaming it, getting it into the right funds so that I can use it to, to buy those supplies. This isn't new money, it is perpetuation money, so.
And those, those items that didn't fit, those were existing items that were moved out of there, old stuff. It wasn't new stuff that was purchased and.
Right.
Yeah. Any questions from counsel? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Transfer agenda, Emergency Medical Service, 121, minus $38,715. A-121, plus $38,715. Total request zero.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Just replace enough spot, yep?
Yeah, Megan Catino, Office Manager, Delaware County MS. This is, we had an employee resign last year, so we waited until this year. So, we are bringing an employee who was part of the layoff when COVID hit. We are bringing that employee back. So, we went down the list and started with the first one with seniority, and we've offered him the spot back.
But this is not a new position. This is a position that's being filled.
Yeah, this is a position that's being filled, yeah.
And that, that person's existing, there's no training, they already know the system.
They already know, yeah. They were an employee for a couple of years prior, and then, he was the first up on the list. He accepted the position back, so we're just filling a previous EMT spot that left last year.
Do you have a homecoming party for him or anything?
Welcome back, get on the truck. That's basically it.
Any more questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
On the general fund.
Delaware County Clerk, 133, Chief Registration Officer, $5,384. Total request, $5,384.
Oh, I was going to say, where'd she go?
I'm back.
We need a motion and a.
Move to approve. Mary got it.
Okay, got a motion from Mary and a second from, I'll take, I'll take Piper since she tried.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from counsel? Can you tell us about this?
Yeah, this is an item that was left out of the budget. This pay line was created when the clerk's office took over administration of the voter registration office, so.
How about, how long ago was that?
Oh, boy, four years ago.
This is, this is for services already rendered, right? I mean, this is because of the election and all that?
It's part of a pay line that's created, you know.
Okay.
This person's been paid by the pay line. They should be paid.
It's a class.
It's Rick's additional pay.
His pay line is the chief registrant for the voter registration.
This is a general fund expense. FYI for the counsel.
Budget.
Make sure it's back on there.
Any other questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Kim Building Fund, 212 badges, $1,024. 362 maintenance and repair, $337. Total request, $1,361.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, I didn't catch who was, I think it was Ron, yeah, from Quakenbush on the second. We'll get you next time, Jane.
You're close.
Hey, let's see, where's this coming from?
Kim Building Fund.
Whose, whose department is that? Okay, go ahead.
This is just badges and maintenance to the badge machine needed. I think it moved from the sheriff's department over to HR now, so they'll kind of be taking care of it. But anytime we have to order badges or do maintenance to the machine, we have to appropriate it out of this, this fund, so.
This was the one that was downstairs in, I can't remember whose office that was, but we don't need to name names, so go ahead. We've got a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
Yep, okay, roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Edit 300, edit projects, $3 million. Total request, $3 million.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. And this is just moving money from edit to be paid?
We approved an edit plan for this year. Help me on that, I don't remember.
Sure. The current edit plan started in 2019 and will expire next year.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, you said you're, we're moving this to.
No, we're appropriating it, we're not moving it.
Or, what is being paid with it?
Each year, you have to appropriate it.
Yeah.
I asked the same question last year, Brian. It's all right.
This is a big one.
It is, it's, it's normal, yeah.
Yeah, it's a.
I got, I caught some, I caught some stuff about that.
This is not the one there was a correction on, is there?
Yes.
It is, yes.
Yeah, but it was corrected prior to, corrected and resent out prior to the meeting, so the copies we have here, we have are, have been corrected.
All right, all right.
Any more questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Emer, excuse me, emergency man, oh, I thought she was saying something. Emergency management, that should be a Ball Foundation grant. 441 EMA, small en, small aircraft engine, $4,883. Total, $4,883.
Move to approve.
Second.
Web.
Second.
Jane's kind of garbled there. Anyway, okay, I got, I got a motion from Piper, and I think I got my second from Webb, so. You'll have to be faster, Jane.
I know.
All right. This was, you, where are we at? There we go, okay.
Yep, this was the Ball grant that we got for the drone last year. It was my fault, I did not realize that it needed to be encumbered from last year to this year to, to carry over, so it's, it's just moving that money back into the line so I can pay for the drone.
Same amount?
Yep, yep.
You guys are using those drones a lot, aren't you?
Yes, that drone that we purchased has been out at least five times, and it's been up in here all five times.
Neighborhood counties as well, right?
Yep, we've been to Randolph County recently, and we're getting ready to purchase a, a second drone. It'll be in the next month. So, I have two drones active in town, or in county now.
Drone's going to be a real asset.
Yeah.
Real quick, not just anybody can fly something at expensive.
No, no, we have four pilots now, and Corey, Kyle, and myself are getting ready to go to drone pilot school for Part 107, so there'll be, the three of us will be drone pilots as well. So, we'll, at the end of it, we'll have like seven pilots. Plus EMS has two they can loan us as, as well, so.
Two pilots or drone?
Two pilots.
Okay, gotcha.
So, our goal is three, like I said.
You're sizing this so that the average individual knows you're.
Yeah, it's, it's been, we, we put it up on our pages and it listed his equipment and everything, so yeah.
No, I mean, actually, you see one flying, how does the public know it's a legit, I guess we'll say?
Usually, if we're there, it's usually a big.
Somebody, they can picture.
Yeah, no, if, if we're flying, it's probably because it's a big scene. Like, for instance, we've had two missing person cases, and, I mean, there are police officers and fire EMS everywhere, so they know there's something going on, but, but I mean, there are police officers and fire EMS everywhere, so they know there's something going on, but, but yeah.
It might be neat too to, you know, maybe.
Or craft scenes or whatever.
Maybe advertise that to the public a little bit on Facebook and talk about, you know, what you, what you guys are doing with these things and how big of an asset they actually are, because I think you're using them for accident investigation, a lot of different things, right?
Yeah, we'll help the Sheriff's Department if they need it or, or whatever, so yeah.
Do you have any like identification markers on them, decals or anything like that?
Probably not that you'd be able to see from, from the ground or anything. I mean, if you did, it'd be this size on it. I mean, the drones aren't very big themselves, the bodies, so, but.
Got a big BB on it, Big Brother.
So, but yeah, that's all, that's what that money is, so.
Are they insured?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, you may try to reach out to maybe Star Press or Muncie Journal or something and get them to do a story on that, on maybe some of the successes there, so.
The utilization, I think the public would love to, you know, at least I'd like to hear more about it.
Absolutely.
Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Reassessment, 111 health insurance, $71, total request, $71.
Move to approve, second.
Motion from Quakenbush, second from Piper. Any discussion on that? Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Disclosure, Sales Disclosure Fund, 392 dues, $878, 316 pictometry, 5,000 monitors, $644, total request, $6,522.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Piper, second from Lassiter.
What's the dues for?
I don't know, nobody's here. Usually you want to approve stuff, they're not here, so.
Oh yeah, I was gonna ask the same question.
That's their ass or dues.
I, I've got a definition question, so, I don't know, I don't even know what, what pictometry.
Pictometry?
No idea.
Usually if, if the department head shows up, you guys usually don't pass it, so.
Department head needs to answer it for me, yeah.
I mean, that's been your past practice.
Doesn't show up, yeah. Well, that last one was a.
Sales Disclosure Fund.
Yeah, 71.
Okay, you want me to.
Is that you?
No, but whose department is that? I don't know.
I have no idea.
It's County Assessors.
Oh, Assessor, I can answer the pictometry question. That's our, that's our aerial imagery, so he's putting funds in to help fund our aerial imagery acquisition. Because we ask all the departments to help fund it because it's expensive.
So are you in contact with him on this?
I'm, I'm sending. No, I just know what pictometry is.
All right, I got you, I got you. I appreciate it.
That's what we like about you, Kyle.
We've got a motion.
I texted him, can we just, can we wait to see if he'll come up?
Yeah, let me, let me see if we can, if we need to table that or not. I think we might need to table it and then come back to it. Bill, can we, do we need to table this and come back to it, or can we skip over it and come back? We got a motion and a second.
Four, so I would table it.
Okay.
Move to table.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Quakenbush and a second from Piper to table. Roll call please.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
No, they should be here.
Okay.
Uh, project income, 109 peer recovery coach, $15,000, total request, $15,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Let me give us a quick explanation on that.
Sure. Elizabeth Bat from DCCC. Um, this is just the difference between our opioid grant to the end of the year. It restarts in August, so this is just the difference in her pay, because it was in the contract for the opioid grant that we pick up the rest.
Is this, this is a partial pay, isn't it?
It is a partial pay, yeah.
The other money comes from a different.
Yeah, she's normally paid out of the opioid grant.
A grant.
Is this a salary?
It is a salary.
Didn't it say coach or couch?
It's, yeah, she's a peer recovery coach, so she helps with people that have had addiction problems.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to be a little facetious of it. It could have been a vehicle too.
Right.
Okay, we got motion and a second. I need a roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
GIS COVID grant, 441, oh wait a minute, I skipped one. 311 contractual services, $3,600, 441 equipment, $1,400, total request, $5,000.
Move to approve.
Uh, motion from Piper, second from Quakenbush. Go ahead, these are, I'll let you say, say it, go ahead.
This is a continuation of the grants that are provided by the local foundations to keep our weekly COVID communication emails and, and press releases going. This fund's another additional six weeks. This is from the George and Francis Ball Foundation. And then they put some funds in there for us to use for equipment or supplies as needed.
Any questions? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Health Department, Ball Brothers OPV21 grant, um, 211 supplies, $1,000, 310, $18,500, staff meals, $320,000, total request, $25,500.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard, and we don't have anybody from the Health Department here.
Move to table.
The next one's just two.
Okay. I think these are continuations of.
I was gonna say, real, real quick.
They're not continuations, they're new.
I was gonna say, does this, they're not here, but if we don't approve these, does that inhibit the Health Department from doing anything in a time where we need them to be on point? Do you see what I'm saying?
He's already spent the money.
You'll have to ask him. I don't know. No, we've not spent the money.
We haven't, okay.
We can't.
I know I have to ask him, I'm just kind of trying to create the dialogue here.
These are brand new, they just got approved, um.
Can you get ahold of the Health Department?
Commissioners.
Okay.
I, I don't want to.
Commissioners meeting wasn't Monday, it was previous Monday, I think they were approved.
No, it was the, um.
Let's, let's see, do we have a, we have a motion and a second?
And then Ron moved to table and Webb seconded it.
Just wait a minute, don't.
On this one? Okay, so we need a roll call on the table?
I had to withdraw the motion and move it to the side. I just, I would hate to, to table something if, if they really need it, maybe, and we, you know.
Well, we're just tabling it until later in the meeting is what we're doing, so we'll get back to it.
All right.
Or you can withdraw the motion and we set it to the side.
Okay.
Set a table and it will wait.
Ryan, it's, it's been tradition before I was ever on here.
Jamie's on his way.
Somebody doesn't appear, the council tables.
Jamie's on his way.
And I get it, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing tradition, what I'm saying is, in a time of a pandemic, do I really want to twist the Health Department's arm when they're already pretty strained? That's where I'm at.
He's on his way.
He's on the way.
Yeah.
All right, well, we can table.
Let's go ahead and table it. We've got a, the table, so really don't do any discussion when you table a motion to table, so let's go ahead and vote on that.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Uh, yes. Mr. Alexander.
Yes, and there may be some discussion. Let's move on down to the enhanced 911 and we'll get that one out of the way.
370 leased telephone replacement, $600,000, total request, $600,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Paul, can you give us a explanation on that?
Paul Singleton, 911 Director, this is money that I'm asking to move out of my state 911 account to partially pay the bill for the new 911 phone system we installed. This will be returned. Um, the total project was 1.3, let me give you the exact amount. The total project was $1,395,000. We were awarded a grant of $1,001,050,000. Out of that $1,050,000 that we were given, we will be reimbursed for 60% of that. So I'm asking $600,000 to come out of mine and then, um, the county will be responsible for the other 795,000.
But how much of this will be reimbursed then?
Out of the money, the grant specifies that money that comes out of the 911 fund has to be reimbursed first, so I'll get 360,000 back, and if the county pays that additional 795,000, I believe the county will get $270,000 back on that.
Explain where the county money's coming from.
I don't know.
But it's already installed?
Yeah, the Commissioners signed, we started this project back in.
What, fall?
October of 19, and it was just completed the end of last year, 1st of January, and I received the bill due.
So the Commissioners will cover the other, but before we move to that, they're actually going to bring it up at the 911 meeting next week, correct? To see if the city would be interested in splitting that 795 with the county.
Yeah, or.
Well, do you have the money in the Commissioners' fund?
It would be an edit payment. But like he said, you know, we would get a portion of it back, but yes, that would be an edit payment.
Is it in that edit plan we just proved, in that 3 million?
There's enough in there to cover that, yes.
Is it listed as an item?
Um, no, we would probably pay it out of building maintenance.
Are these one-time calls?
Yeah. Well, this, this is a 10-year agreement. This is a one-time payment for, for 10 years. So other than me having my normal phone access fees that I pay, um, this is a one, one-time fee. And it covers 10 years, and during that 10 years, at about the five-year mark, we'll get an equipment refresh, so we'll get all new hard, hardware on scene, onsite.
Paul and I have been in communication about this. I mean, this is something that, I mean, there's no choice here. We've got to figure it out because, you know, this, he's put this off and put this off. I believe he put it off during budget time when it came to some of those issues we were dealing with, and, I mean, we just don't have a choice. We're, we're gonna have to figure it out. It is a, it is a large cost, there's no question about it, um, but if you don't have phones, then what? So, you know what I mean?
I agree with that, I was just questioning the lease versus purchase.
Is it AT&amp;T?
The lease, a good idea.
Well, it's, it's, it's called a lease. We don't own any of the equipment because it pays for, there's, there's equipment out in the cloud. So it pays for more than just the equipment we have there, so there's no way we can buy that equipment that's out in the cloud, so that's why it's all considered a lease.
Do you know when the agreement was made on, on this? I'm sorry, Ryan, I didn't.
No, that's okay, I just.
We started this project October of 2019. With the Commissioners signing the paperwork that I could pursue the grant, and then they also signed paperwork that said that they would fund, fund the additional monies.
And you've got the other, the other part of, part of it funded, so this is 100% paid by the, the Commissioners out of edit and the monies that you've had in there and then reimbursed?
He's paying 600,000.
I'm paying 600,000 out of my.
795,000 roughly, out of edit, for a total cost of $1,300,000.
I have 600,000 that I'm putting towards it because I've not had a capital phone payment because our other system was so old, it was paid, paid for. We were just paying a maintenance on it. So I've got that money, 600,000, in my 1222 account, but that's my operating budget, operating balance too, in that 1222 account. That's why the reimbursement has to come back to that, or I'm not gonna have, that, that account will be in the red by, I think Don and I figured, the end of next, next year. So that's why that, I'm paying that amount, but that reimbursement has to come back to that account.
How quick is that reimbursement?
Uh, the state has the money on hand, so if I, my hope is, they said, if I can get it in this quarter yet, we can get it back sooner. Um, but the state has that money in hand, so it's a matter of showing proof that it's been paid. And I've got an AT&amp;T bill for 1.3 something million dollars that was, I got in January. I've already called them and told them that we were having to appropriate and transfer in February. Now it's March, so, um, I'm sure AT&amp;T's gonna start calling and want to know where their 1.3 million dollars is.
Wondered why their stock was down so much.
What is the bill for 1,000 or 1,395?
95.
You want us to prove the 600,000 out of your own account?
Well, and this, this amount adds up to the 1,395, right? Six and seven ninety-five?
Into my account, yes, sir.
So what part of it's not covered? It's all.
The sooner I get it paid and submitted, the money is, the federal monies is already in the hands of Indiana.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of getting paperwork processed and get it through. Yeah, I'm looking.
So then it's paid?
Yeah.
Right?
One, one to three months.
Okay, all right.
You know, depending on the billing cycle that it's submitted to the state.
I'd say you're a little bit more optimistic than I am, but, I mean, I, I don't see it coming, you know, within six months, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
I, I get it, I get it, so.
But that money's available.
It just never, nothing's quick with the state.
It's just like this year's body scanner, last year, I, we had the money back like in a month.
Did you really?
Yeah, because I said, don't bet on that, and it did.
I'm in the same boat.
We never get it back that fast, and I was very surprised we got that body scanner. It was probably within a month.
Any more questions from council? Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
James is out in the hallway.
Let's, um.
Sales Disclosure.
Okay, James, come on in. Um, we need a motion to remove, um, the Sales Disclosure appropriation from the table.
So move.
Second.
Motion from Ballard, second from Piper. Roll call please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, we got the Sales Disclosure Fund is what we've just removed from the table, so I need, well, we've got a motion to approve, so we'll just need to get an explanation. Go ahead and tell us what you got.
Well, first of all, I apologize for the lateness because I had a backup plan today. I was getting vaccinated this morning and, uh, my backup plan called in, so. I just arrived and I got a phone call saying there's nobody up here, so, okay, uh, so, uh, we have, there's some new programs going through the state right now that personal property filers, as of next year, will be able to file online rather than do an in-person type filings, which makes it easier for them in the long run, um, to do that, just shoveling papers mostly the big issue there, so. And with that came with, um, extra space on systems and everything to carry, whether filing and everything, have some of it on a monitor over here and some of it on a monitor over here, so the new computer systems that we upgraded to, actually have the video cards already in them to add another monitor, so that's what this is for, is adding the second monitor, so they can have the camera system up over here and the personal property system up over here.
Been proven that additional monitors increase efficiency, so.
Yes. Yes, it does.
You must have additional monitors.
I have it too.
What's that, they want to know what the dues were for?
Yeah.
What?
They want to know what the dues are for?
Uh, annual dues for, uh, associations and, for the County Assessor Association and the IAAO. Members I have to be involved with to get continuing education.
Then while you're at it, that health insurance line up above that was, you guys are just short.
There was reported, there was gonna be a shortfall in that line item.
All right.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yep.
We do. We just need a roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yep.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Jamie out there?
There he is.
All right, we have a, um.
I read the first one.
You read the first.
We've got that, that's, that was moved to the table, so.
Move to remove from the table?
Second.
Move to remove the, um, Health Department Fund, 9210 Ball Brothers OP-V21 from the table, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, got a motion from Piper, second from Ballard to remove that. Roll call please, Steve.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard. Yes. Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Go ahead, Jamie, can you tell us about the Ball Brothers grant there?
Yeah, excuse me, uh, the Ball Brothers grant, is this, uh, is it $25,000? Is this the one we're talking about right now? Yes. Okay, um, just background info, we've gotten five from them, five, we've got this 25, we have an upcoming, I think we're eligible for 35 potentially in the upcoming one, and I have an 84,600 one that may be on today as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. I apologize for not being prepared. I had Tuesday on the calendar. When I saw that there was no finance meeting, I just deleted today. When I saw that there was no finance meeting, I just deleted today. But thank you for this, Jenny. Okay, so the Ball Brothers grant is to fund, they stepped forward when they saw that the community needed help kind of augmenting what we can do when it comes to vaccine. So they initially stepped out with some money to help with, um, advertising messaging campaigns, expanded it to this to assist more directly. The money that we've budgeted here is, um, the 18.5 for contractual services. We're gonna be paying like Delaware County EMS, for example, possibly some other partner agencies for the role that they're playing in assisting in our clinics. So Delaware County EMS has provided us a paramedic. The state requires a paramedic be on site to, um, observe for reactions after vaccination. They've provided us a paramedic during every open hour of our operation. Last-minute changes, last-minute requests, they get someone there, they have it covered. Uh, so far, they've been eating the cost on overtime, which has been pretty significant. Uh, this money will allow us to help reimburse them for a lot of that work that they're doing, so it's not coming out of their budget. Uh, we have, uh, meals. Uh, we're gonna be shifting our hours now that the eligibility is open to younger age groups. We're gonna shift our hours to go later into the evening till 6 o'clock and open Saturday clinics. Previously, when we had the older age groups of 70 and older, the workday was pretty acceptable. We were able to fill the calendar completely and get those people in. But now that we're getting into, uh, working age groups, we're trying to accommodate those. So we're gonna be providing meals so that we can get our staff. I've knocked our staff down to half-hour lunches instead of hour. Bring food in. We're not gonna be feeding everyone every single day. It's gonna be Saturdays and then at least one other day a week will provide some kind of meal. And we have a thousand dollars in supplies. We've ran into a couple instances now where there's just been random things that pop up where we've needed something. We needed some, uh, some partitions to provide privacy. We're able to get those ordered quickly before, we wanna be sure that we have some money sitting there ready in case something like that pops up again. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of that.
Any questions from council?
I, I'm curious, you, you get a grant like this from Ball Brothers, um, foundation. Is there, is this then excluded from your claim to the COVID grants coming through the state? How, how are you keeping track of that?
We have a separate fund set up.
So.
Like, on the agenda, Ron, the next one is a COVID state.
That's what made me curious is.
If you, anything you see in the 9000s, that's a local grant.
Right.
Like, that 9210 tells, tells me it's local. Most of them are all Ball found, most of them are all Ball Foundation grants. One where, one, you know, we've got two or three.
Yeah.
When you see anything in the 8000s, that tells you it's a state. So his, his next one on the agenda is a State Cares Act-funded grant.
Well, I was just kinda looking at it from the point of view of a long-term taxpayer in the United States of America. Paid a lot of taxes to the federal government and now a bunch of it's coming back. And I just wonder, it looks like there's a bit of extravagance. I just thought I'd ask the question.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the meals, is that something you typically do? Do you typically provide meals like that?
We've, the only times in the past, it's been very few and far between, we've ever provided any food. And it would come out of our, like, our donation fund. Or we've had grants, old grants from way back when that didn't have stipulations on what the money could be used for, for example. And, um, there was a year, it was before my time, where they bought meals for everyone when they hosted like an all-day training. I think we've bought meals when we had like an internal staff party using our donation fund money. Uh, we've never provided food for anything else.
Jamie, I think it's very reasonable if you're gonna be keeping people, you know, not necessarily having a whole lot of time off from giving shots or whatever. I like that, I think that's a good amenity to have in there, so.
Thank you.
Any more questions from council? Okay, once again, we wanna thank the Ball Brothers Foundation. Um, again, they've done, done a lot, uh, during the pandemic, uh, for sure, for a lot of different groups, so. Thank you, and roll call, please, Steve.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Hey, Board of Health Cares Act, 196 overtime, 67,850. 171 FICA, 5,190. 172 per, 7,600. Total request, 80,640.
Moved to approve.
Okay.
Motion from Piper, second from Quaken Bush. Any questions on that?
This part of the 20 million we're getting back?
The new, no, this was previous.
Yeah, this, the state health department funded us with 200,000 initially. This would've been fall of la, or maybe summer last year to fund for testing. So we contracted with Open Door. They've operated two testing sites on our behalf. That's where that 200,000 goes. Then, when the vaccine became available and they expected us to stand up clinics, they provided us this 80,000. It doesn't have a direct stipulation on what it has to be used for, like, there's not a strict single rule, but it says it's to, uh, provide for staffing, kinda in the broad sense. So, um, with our shift in hours, it seems like the good opportunity, pay them for overtime out of this rather than it be comp time that's accrued. You guys are all aware, last year, the massive payout to our nursing director on comp time that we luckily, I believe, were able to get compensated through the Cares Act. But without this, those are gonna be comp hours that are gonna be on the county to reimburse eventually. There is, with the staff of, um, I think I have 12 currently, one of them's part-time. There is no way for me to keep people below that comp, uh, upper limit as we move through this. I mean, maybe there is, maybe the, the pandemic goes away in a couple months and we don't see this issue, but, that's what I had, I'd budgeted this in hopes of paying them for that overtime to work over till 6 o'clock on Saturdays. And we're gonna be called upon to do stand-up clinics. They requested we do one this weekend. Contact us on Monday, tell us to be ready Saturday to operate a clinic. And as of today, I still haven't even gotten a reply back whether we're approved. So, um, everybody's waiting on an answer.
State Health Department, they is the state.
Yes, State Health Department.
Are you guys, are you fully staffed?
Fully staffed is, uh, is tough. We were, um, when I worked there in 2005, I think we, we might've had right around the 20 employee mark. So we're way down. We do have, um, I have an open environmental health position and I now, I believe I'm now eligible to fill an open nursing position. I've held off on doing both of those things. One, because everything's just been too frantic moving through with COVID vaccine clinics and trying to arrange for new clinics to open up. It also paid off that we didn't fill the environmental position last year because some of that money is what has, what helped us get the payment made for, um, our nursing director. We were able to transfer that money and that's what paid her out on all those extra hours. So, um, we do have the room, we do anticipate and need to fill those. It's a matter of getting to the position to do that properly rather than it just be a rushed, hire somebody to hire somebody and move on.
Jamie, I was in a meeting, um, yesterday morning early, well, Zoom meeting. But anyway, you've got, as far as this Saturdays goes, you've got, um, the, the cooperation of the, the hospital and a whole lot of people on social media ready to get the word out if you're, if you do get approval for that and have a place and the people to do it. They have people available. I think the hospital and the convention center said they would have people available to, to help watch after those, those are given.
Yeah, we have, what happened, we had an, uh, we have a weekly, we call it the Community Partners Call, Open Door, Meridian Hospital, us, uh, Ball Brothers takes part, Kyle and EMA. They're coordinating that for us and taking part. We, we were looking for multiple sites to be ran simultaneously. Meridian stepped forward, they've put their name in the ring to host a 500-dose clinic over four hours, which is pretty significant.
And, and Meridian, that was another one I guess they'd, they'd thrown in too.
So that's what, that's the proposal we have to the state right now, is the Meridian clinic supplemented by us. I would be providing staff to help them operate their clinic. Uh, when I did a little inventory of my staff, we have a lot of people out with spring break starting, so we weren't gonna be able to host our own clinic this Saturday. But we have enough people I can send over there to try to supplement what they're doing.
Okay. Any more questions for Jamie?
One thing.
Curiously, they're giving shots at the Payless grocery. Do you supervise those in any way, or?
No, um, I believe Payless, Meyer, and Walmart all receive a very small allotment from the state. I'm not sure the, any of the background on that.
They're just flying on their own, huh?
No, it's, as far as I understand, it's provided by the state to them. We have no oversight over that. Thank goodness, no role in what they're doing. Same with Meridian and Open Door and the hospital, it's all direct from the state. We don't have to serve as a middleman on any of that. Jamie, I have one question related to this for council.
Yeah.
Or auditor's office, I'm not sure, maybe both. We've been accruing overtime for the last, at least month, related to this. Um, I'm wondering if we can back pay for those comp hours that have been accrued over the last month, six weeks or so, related to this directly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If it was all accrued this year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I mean, it's not even this year, I'm trying to keep it strictly to the COVID clinic related.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Jamie, what I will say, in the, the spirit of lack of communication from the state, I wanna commend your guy, you guys in the health department, um, you know, this garbage death certificate system that we've been dealing with this past year. I've been very vocal about it and I continue to be. The only reason we're getting resolution as funeral directors and getting these people the, the, the death certificates they need is because of the people in your office communicating with, uh, the people on the ground. So I wanna commend everybody in that office and, and, you know, the, the people that I interact with daily. Uh, thank you guys very much because you're, you're the only ones that are doing anything here. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that. I'll pass that on to them.
Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Let's see, did we get a vote on that?
Nope.
Nope, okay, roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. Okay, we're ready for the motion.
Yes, here you go. Motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions and to amend hiring freeze ordinance 2020-015.
Second.
Motion from Piper, second from Ballard. Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes. We have an, uh, let's see, we don't have any appointments, I don't think. Um, ordinance for second reading, ordinance 2021-006. Again, this is for second reading. We'd need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
What'd that say again?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, got a motion from Webb.
Second from one.
Second from Ra, or second, second from Quaken Bush. I'm gonna try and learn to say last names here. Discussion on that from council.
So that, I, I guess, I just wanna confirm, this is completely just for the custodial maintenance staff, right? This doesn't, doesn't impact any other department?
Just for you.
Okay.
And also, this is, this has already been done, this is just about correcting the paperwork for moving forward.
Yes, and to move forward, yes, that's correct.
And then the decision will still lie within the supervisors in that department to make the decision on what the pay rate will be.
That's exactly right. That is exactly right, Ryan. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
What are we doing?
What's that, Ron?
What are we doing?
Second reading on 2021.
Second reading on 2021.
Oh, that was on those part-time wages?
006, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions? Ron? No?
No, I was studying this page here and wasn't paying any attention, I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody else? Roll call, please, Steve.
Mr. Ballard.
No.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quaken Bush.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
No, I'll vote with.
The minority.
Yeah. That's approved.
Thank you very much, council, I appreciate it.
Okay, I don't have anything else, uh. Hold on, Ron, you got something?
Well, I'm confused on something here. I have a wheel tax report. I don't know, maybe I should go to the auditor's office and check it out. It's dated as of June 2019. I've got two reports and one is for the wheel tax, uh, non-city, 54,000. I-4238. And then the most recent one, which I know it's most recent because it's by your paper. It's not eight, 86,46566. And the total for the whole county went from 13311 to 210861. And why did I get a second report?
Who'd? Who'd you get it from?
Probably Kita, maybe.
Uh, you'll have to come down, 'cause I, without looking at it, I don't really even know what you're talking about.
Well, I had it in my pocket here and I just remembered one last.
Jamie, whatever needs signed, I'm gonna have to.
I give it to Ryan.
Oh, okay.
What is it?
Well, to sign.
Yeah, I got it right here, I'm working through it.
Okay.
So we wanted to, see that with us. Passing the one-year mark for, uh, everyone having to deal with COVID and it's been a long journey and, you know, I'm sure everybody's been touched with it some way or another. Some of us have had it or have loved ones that have had it. And, uh, it's been a tough fight, we've all been, uh, grinding it out. And it looks like we're, we're really making a lot of progress. And my hope is that hopefully very soon, within the next couple of meetings, you know, we'll have the, the mask mandate and the restrictions moved from the governor and then hopefully the county will follow. We can get back to the normal and being able to have the public here and ask a question as they choose.
Yeah.
And things going forward.